The May 4th, 2015 regularly scheduled meeting of the Robertson County School Board will now come to order. Please silence all your cell phones and electronic devices and join me in a moment Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, I would like to present our pledge of allegiance tonight. They are from this high school. They're representing their senior class. I would like to start on this end and if you can say your name and what school you're from and introduce yourselves to the board.
I'm Krista Willhite and I'm from White House Heritage High School.
I'm Maria Chiakio and I'm also from White House Heritage High School.
I'm Derek Holmes. I'm also from White House Heritage High School.
I'm Michaela Dixon. I'm from East Robertson High.
I'm Murphy Stadjo. I'm Murphy Stadjo also from Greenbrier.
I'm Sloan Carolyn. I'm from Gilbert High School.
I'm Patrick Perry. I'm from Gilbert High School.
I would ask that you turn and to the audience, we will introduce ourselves as well. We're going to start on this end. Go down.
I'm Patrick Perry and I'm from Gilbert High School.
I'm Sloan Carolyn. I'm from Gilbert High School.
I'm Murphy Stadjo. I'm from Greenbrier.
I'm Sarah Johnson. I'm from Greenbrier.
I'm Samantha Stevens and I'm from East Robertson High School.
I'm Michaela Dixon. I'm from East Robertson.
I'm Derek Holmes. I'm from White House Heritage.
I'm Maria Chiakio and I'm from White House Heritage.
And I'm Krista Willhite and I'm from White House Heritage.
We are so very happy to have you here tonight and we wish you the best. In just a few weeks, you'll be out there on your own earning a living or going to school or doing what you worked 12 years to do. So just give them a big hand. Mr. Davis, would you please read our mission and vision statements?
Students and their achievement must be the focus of our every meeting, our every plan, our every decision. The mission and vision statements of the Robertson County school system are the expressions of what we believe and what we expect. We believe our mission is to ensure each student is prepared to succeed in life. Our vision is that Robertson County schools will enable all students to reach and exceed high academic and career standards while empowering them to succeed in a technologically advanced and culturally diverse society.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you have before you tonight an agenda, several items on the consent agenda. What is your pleasure concerning this?
Move to approve the consent agenda, please.
Is there a second?
Right.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes six zero. We will move to recognition of student, teacher, and school achievements. Guessing that's Ms. Doris.
That's what it is.
Okay. We had invited a Springfield wrestler to come. We've had some difficulty getting him here. I don't know, miscommunication, but I would like to recognize him regardless that he is not here. I have a little email from the coach. I was wanting to recognize one of Springfield's wrestlers who placed fifth at state. His name is Jacob Shelton. He placed fifth in the 106 weight class in class AAA wrestling. So we would like to recognize him and we will get him the certificate as well. I would ask now that Ms. Brooke Callis, Assistant Principal at Greenbrier Elementary, come forward. She is going to present some awards for some of her students. I'll let her tell you a little bit about that.
Thank you, Ms. Doris. And board members, we received some certificates at Greenbrier Elementary on behalf of Senator Kerry Roberts. We had in third, fourth, and fifth grade, we had the first and second place winners. Yeah, I should say in fourth and fifth grade for the Robertson County Science Fair. They were both first and second, and then the first place for third grade as well. So we were very proud of these individuals and just wanted to recognize them. The first one is Wade Cersey. He received first place in the fifth grade County Science Fair. I'm not sure if the next one's here. Lillian Chapman. Is she out there anywhere? Okay. She was second place in fifth grade. We have Tyler Williamson who received first place in fourth grade. We have John Crutcher. John, John may not be out there either. And this one, I'm not sure if they're here either, but first place in third grade was Jacob Henderson. My mom wasn't sure if he was coming tonight or not, but we'll hang onto those and get those at school. But guys, we sure are proud of your accomplishments and we really take pride in this placement here at Greenbrier Elementary. So good job, boys.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask Ms. Kathy Gunn and Ms. Kendra Shelton to come forward. They have some special awards.
Thank you, Ms. Donna. And board members, thank you for having us here tonight. We had some conversation with our county trustee, Ms. Kendra Shelton, early on after the ACT Counts program that was so successful. She really wanted to participate in the community and reward students that have gone above and beyond an ACT, the ACT. And so she and I kind of put this program together and we called it Club 30. And I want her to tell you a little bit about what her thoughts are behind it, but we wanted to recognize and reward seniors that have, seniors and juniors that have made over a 30 on the ACT.
I'll just say real quick, it actually came to me about a year ago at the chamber board meeting that we put a lot of emphasis on bringing the bottom up and a lot of hard work there and that sometimes the top doesn't get the recognition. And I just thought, if I feel like that's something that I see, that I can do something about it. And so sometimes you have to put your money where your mouth is, I guess. So I gave her the idea. She ran with it, came back with the names. I made the donations. She's got the checks and the certificates and I'm just here to give the congratulations. So we have $100 each for all 17 who made $30 or above on the, on the ACT. So if we'll just call them all up, we'll give them to you. Some of them I think maybe not are here.
I don't, I don't know how many are here.
Okay.
But if you want to call them.
Okay. All right. The first one is Krista Willhite. She is from White House Heritage High School. And she said Springfield High School is having their award ceremony tonight. That's why those students will not be here. So we'll make sure that they get their awards. Okay. The next one is Jacob Thomas. He's from East Robertson High School. And the next one is Jenna Swan from East Robertson High School. Okay. Let's see if I can get this right. This is Paul Stadju? Or I think he goes by Murphy? Okay. There he is. And Luke Sauer from Joe Burnside? I must say this might make me feel old because these papers are supposed to be really small. Okay. Michael Richards from East Robertson High School. Okay. Brady O'Brien from Greenbrier High? Nope. Okay. Claire Keller from Springfield High will not be here. Sarah Johnson from Greenbrier High, I think she is here. And next is Derek Holmes from White House Heritage. And Michaela Dixon from East Robertson High. Carolyn Dean from Springfield High, she's not here. Trevor Damer from Joe Burnside? I don't think I saw him. Gavin Cox from White House Heritage. Logan Clark from Springfield High. Okay. Maria Chiakio. How bad did I mess that up? And last but not least is Sloan Carolyn from Joe Burnside. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I'd love to get a picture with everyone. Can we make two rows? I'd be good.
While she's getting that picture, this student's made at least a 30.
She made at least a 30 on the ACT. I'll get the mail.
Okay. Next, we have Ms. Kathy Gunn, our presentation of the pre-K through 5 parent survey.
Each year, we do a parent survey in conjunction with the school system. This year, the survey was pre-K through fifth grade, and we do that every other year. Last year, it was sixth grade through 12th grade. And one of the most important things when you do a survey is that you make sure that the input that comes back, you actually do something with it if need be, or you can look for opportunities to be able to improve if possible. I'm happy to report on the survey for this year, there was a lot of great information. But I do want to just touch on what we call a parent action plan that comes from the surveys from the years before to make sure that people know that we do read them and we look at them for opportunities for improvement and we read the comments. The three things on the parent action plan from the survey last year from sixth through 12th grade, there was a lot of bus, bus stress, I guess you'd call it. The websites were something that we, that were, had some information that I think was lacking, and then we had some issues about communication and how to find resources. The bus stress, we had people, students staying after school, one and a half hours after dismissal, and parents had significant concerns about how often the buses were late or canceled. Some of the things that your system did to improve on those things, the system requested five more buses to help alleviate those transportation issues. They received two. So as you can imagine, students are still waiting some time after school, at the most an hour. Last year was an hour and a half. And I don't know if it's all schools or not. It might be something that we could look into and look at. But I know that you all are working to continually get more buses and more transportation to be able to, you know, fix those issues. The system hired extra drivers too this year, one for each cluster, so that if you had a driver that called out sick, you would actually have a backup driver there that day. And I think that that probably alleviated a significant number of the 5:30 a.m. calls that said the bus is not coming. So I think that that's an excellent solution for that. This also, this year's survey had very few comments about buses on it as compared to last year's. So I think that that speaks to the improvements that were made this year. And I know that you all are still working, you know, to continue to make sure that you have efficient busing. And the second thing in the action plan was the websites. Last year, 73% of the parents rarely accessed the school's websites, did not know they existed or would use them if they were more updated, and 49% of them said they didn't use them because the information was not updated. Your system put a project team in place to determine the website needs for the school system. That team determined that an up-to-date web presence would not only be a resource to our current students, parents, and teachers, but could also be a strong marketing tool for our communities and schools. And right now, negotiations are being finalized with hopes to open the sites at the beginning of the next school year. So that project is in place and moving forward in excellent manner. Communication was the third. Communication methods preferred by parents were mainly electronic unless their behavior issues were out there and which a phone call was preferred, which makes sense. They wanted more communication and information from the schools and information, a lot of that was about, was from the classroom. It was about resources and homework and things like that. This website program that you all are about to implement is going to actually have solutions for those kind of communication tools. Teachers will be very, will be able to very easily put their own websites up and click and drag assignments to them and put files up there. So they'll be very accessible to their students, which is going to be excellent. I just want to mention some of the great stuff from this year's survey. 88% of all English-speaking parents rated the overall satisfaction with their child's education as mostly or very satisfied. 94% of the Hispanic families felt that same way. 89% are mostly or very satisfied with their safety of their children. And that's up from 84% two years ago when the same survey was done. Probably has a lot to do with the safe entries that you all have put in place and the fact that portables are going away because of the schools, the new school that's being built. 90% of the people believe there are no serious student or behavior discipline problems at the schools. And I should mention that this survey was the most responded to survey we've ever done. We had 36% of all the pre-K through 5th grade parents respond to this survey, 2,000 surveys. So 90% say there are no serious behavior discipline problems at the schools. In regards to teacher communications, 83% are mostly or very satisfied with communication with their teachers, and teachers were rated 92% on their responsiveness to parent concerns. Principals were rated 83% good or excellent on the responsiveness to parent concerns, and your school office staff was rated at 89%, which is excellent. Both of those are excellent. 95% of the schools feel that they're neat and clean and in good repair. 12% of all the parents that responded do not have internet access, but two years ago, that was 16%, and two years before that, it was 18%. So that trend is going down, which is good. We want everyone to have internet access and, and I know that the city, the chamber, I know is working with Fastnet and trying to get some more access available in the rural areas of the county. We hope that happens soon because I live in the rural area of the county and would like better access to. 84% of the parents feel their students need at least weekly access to computers. 94% of the Hispanic families participated in parent-teacher conferences, which is a really high number, which I thought was really cool. 20% of the, of the families are not satisfied with the school nutrition program, and you asked me why that's on the great stuff, and the reason it is, is that two years ago, it was 45%. So that's a pretty huge improvement over a two-year period, 25% improvement. And so that's why it's there. This next year, the parent action plan from the current survey consists of three challenges or things we want to look into a little bit more. One is, we'll call it advanced options. 44% of all parents rated advanced academic programs as fair to poor in the elementary schools. 35% of the parents with special, the second one we'll call special needs, 35% of parents with special needs children say their needs are not being met. That number for the exact same question in 2013 is up from 27%. So we probably need to dig into that just to see what they're really, what their expectations are versus what we can offer and what we do offer. And this last one is in regards to private schools. And whereas 65% of the people in our community feel like that our school system is good or better than private schools, you still have a group of people, about 35%, that think that our school system is fair. About 10% of those think it's poor compared to private schools. I happen to think that it's excellent compared to private schools, but I feel like that that's an opportunity for us to market to a good 35% of the people in our community. And maybe we can tell them a little bit more about what we're doing and, and what we have to offer. And so those are the, that's the parent action plan that we're going to take forward for this next year. And I'll again, report next year on the progress of this, and we'll do the survey for six through 12 again next year. I do want to just mention that Highland Crest donated five students, college students, and they, they hand typed in 1,300 surveys because the principals, administration did such a great job of, of getting parents to respond. I want to thank the principals and administration here who took the time and the effort to get this information in. And I also wanted to specifically congratulate White House Heritage Elementary School, who had the highest participation, and will be receiving a check for $1,000 towards whatever programs that they would like to put that towards as a, as a reward for getting the highest percentage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Ms. Nikki Fields with RCEA.
Like to wish everyone a happy National Teacher Appreciation Week. Invite you again to attend our banquet tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at Greenbrier Middle School. I hope to see those of you who can attend there. Also, update on collaborative conferencing. We meet again next Tuesday. Things are going great. We have had tentative agreement on lots of articles, over half of the old contract we've gone through. We hope to finish up almost everything next Tuesday, and then we have one additional meeting set for the first week of June, once we're all out of school, a full-day meeting. Hopefully, we'll have it finished then and be able to send that to you all and hopefully get that on the agenda for the July meeting to get that finalized, the new memorandum. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have our personnel report.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, you have the personnel report in your packet. You will notice there were a total of 76 personnel actions on the certified side of the House this month. A large portion of those involved transfers, 54 individuals were being transferred for next year. And that comes about due to the fact that we are opening Crestview Elementary School and lots of teachers will be transferred and also changing the grade makeup of West Elside Elementary and of Chedon Park. So that accounts for a large portion of your personnel actions. Subject to your questions, that completes my report, Madam Chairman. Oh, no, it does not complete my report. Classified, we had a total of 35 actions. Eighteen are new hires. We had eight resignations, five retirements, and three transfers, subject to your questions. That completes my personnel report.
Any questions for Mr. Davis? Okay. We'll move on to our expense comparison report.
The expense comparison report is also in your packet. You were comparing expenditures for the month of March. This, this data is a month behind. It's flagging data, and it's that way because they don't close the books until after the 10th of the month each year. So in fact, we have a school board meeting earlier. We don't get Aprils until later this week. But you can see that we are running about where we anticipated we would be this time of year. In March, we were at 79.53% of revenues collected. For 2015, we are at 80.99%. Property tax is coming in a little better. It's 102% as opposed to 100% last year. And sales tax is at 70.42% compared to 69%. Expenditures are tracking about where we anticipated. Gasoline is a little bit over budget line item, but not anything to be alarmed about at this time. Our diesel is quite a bit under our line item expectations. So we're, we're tracking about where I anticipated we'd be at this time of the year. Subject to your questions, that completes my report, Madam Chairman.
Any questions on expense comparison report? Okay. We'll move to approval of general fund budget amendment.
You have a budget amendment in your packet. This is what we call normally referred to as a cleanup budget amendment, where you have some line items that has additional funds in it and some line items have, need some additional funding. And we do a couple of these at the end of the year. Sheila Kleiner and I have gone through this along with Dr. Cash, and this will pretty much balance out 85% of your line items in your budget for the year. We will be doing another one next month because there's a good possibility that we're going to have to approve a budget amendment and insurance line items for the additional payment that the county is requesting that we make in this fiscal year. And so we will be coming back to you with that along with our, we may have to request some additional funding in our legal cost. We have been presented with a bill for, for lawsuits or litigations that took place this past year. They have been resolved, and, and in your insurance plans you have with Tennessee Risk Management, you have a $25,000 deductible for each and every case. So that's a $10,000 budget line item. We'll have, we, we've got the money in there to pay that, but we may have to come back with some more money for that time. But this is probably, wouldn't you say, Sheila, the largest budget amendment we'll have for the year? And the total of that budget amendment, although there's a lot of items there, is Not a, not a budget amendment for $87 million budget.
Okay. You've heard this amendment. What is your pleasure to approve it?
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion in second. Any other discussion? Do they have any? All those in favor of approval of this general fund budget amendment, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes six zero.
Next item I have is an approval of use of Venter Flex Bid Advantage for school nutrition programs and food supplies, and I'd like for Patsy Gregory, our food service director, to come up and discuss that with the board or present that to the board at this time.
Thank you all so much. Before I start talking about Bid Advantage, in addition to the RCEA banquet on Tuesday night, on Thursday night of this week at 5:30 at the First United Methodist Church, our School Nutrition Program Central Office is having a recognition event for our school nutrition employees. This is something we started last year just to let them know that we appreciate the work they do. We give out a lot of awards Thursday night, 5:30 at First United Methodist Church, and I know it would mean a lot to my employees if you all would be able to come. Now, Bid Advantage is a tool that we are looking at using. You have a letter in your board packet from our finance department that really explains, I think, well, what this tool does for us. Number one, it helps us in compiling the bid specifications. You all will have approximately 450, 500 items on our bid, and on every item, we have to specify how many grams of sodium, how many grams of fat, very detailed specifications. This tool has taken the specifications that USDA has already approved and loaded that in a database so that all we have to do, when we look at chicken nuggets, we pull up the specs on chicken nuggets, we put it in our bid, and then we don't have to hand type every one of those details. Number two, after the bid is done, we can actually, through the Bid Advantage system, we can send it out to different vendors, and then when we get it back, it would help in the evaluation process. Now, you are, what Bid Advantage is not, it is not a purchasing group. We did come and talk to you all, and you approved us getting out of Walco. This is not any kind of a substitution for that. We are doing our own bid. We're the only county that's involved in this bid. So it's, it's not a purchasing group. We're not purchasing anything from Bid Advantage. It is purely a tool that we're using. We are not changing the way the bid process works. As you can see from this, Ms. Moon has been involved in this. Jody has been involved in it. We will do our, our hard copy bid specifications and bid terms. They will be sent out through finance, just like they always are. Hard copies will come back to them. Once we get them back and they're tabulated, we'll bring them to this board with your approval. Then they'll go to the finance committee of the county commission in order to have their approval. So we're not changing anything. It's purely a tool that will help us make sure we're compliant with USDA requirements, and we'll also just make sure that all of the specifications are exactly like they need to be. Questions?
What's the cost of this? I mean, is this a extra cost to do this?
There is no, there is no cost. And the way it works, I think something that we're all very familiar with, Muckey Barnes, they have advertising, Tyson has ads on the site, and I mean, Tyson buys the ad so that when people are looking at the site, they see Tyson. So companies like that- So, companies like that sell the advertising. It is no cost whatsoever to us.
I went to the website and looked it over, and I was trying to find out who actually was running that.
Right.
So, what are we, what are we, what are you asking us to do, Patsy? What are we approving?
Just us being able to use this tool.
Do you need our approval for that?
I'm not sure that we do. I just want to be very transparent with what we're doing.
But she came to me and asked that same question. I mean, it's just a tool. It's a means to an end.
It is.
Well, it is a tool to make sure that we're in compliance with all of USDA requirements when it comes to the different types of foods that we get. And so, I thought it was best that we be transparent, and that we bring it to the board, and that you approve this process or this tool that we're going to use to make sure that occurs. So, that's why she came. We really didn't have to break it, but I thought we should have.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Okay.
Motion in a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next item is an approval of fiscal year 16 federal plan and budget.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, you have a copy of the federal programs allocations spreadsheet in your packet. I believe, if I'm reading this correctly, we are gaining about $115,999.2. Is that right, Ms. Stephanie? In the next year's funding, so that's good news. And these have to be approved, and the application has to be submitted to the department. So, we need the board approval for the application this year, in the allocations.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes 6-0. Approval of Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Plan and Budget.
That is also a federal budget. That requires board approval to be submitted to the state in order to get the funds that we need in Carl Perkins's budget. And I believe Mr. Gregory's here. That's $136,497, Mr. Gregory. And I recommend approval.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approval, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 6-0. Approval of board policy revisions, a first reading. Dr. Cash?
Good evening. You have two policy revisions that are first reading. If you would please look at policy revision 4.340. It's field trip and excursion. And we have requested to add the line under number six. Chaparrones and teachers must have separate rooms from students with exemption of their own child. That's the protection of our employees.
Do you want to do these together, Madam Chairman, or do you want to take them separately?
Let's do them together.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding number six on that first reading, field trips and excursions?
That's just only change?
That's the only change, that's it. On your policy revision 6.220, this is the first reading. It is a revision for student assignment. It complies with our Department of Justice requirements for zoning. If you will notice, it allows us only to use 911 addresses of the parent and legal guardian, and it must be a student's primary resident Monday through Friday and a majority of nights per month. It also states, no transfers will be granted in county or out of county where the cumulative effect will reduce desegregation in the sending or receiving school. All transfers are provisional based on a periodic review of enrollment data and continued efforts to reduce desegregation. That allows us to comply with our DOJ requirements. Any questions?
Move for approval of board policy 4.340 and 6.220, first reading.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval of these board policies on first reading, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have an approval of special course requests for ACT Prep for Success.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, anytime you submit an application for a special course to be offered in your district, you're required to get permission or approval from the Department of Education for three years. This is year two of our request for approval of the ACT Preparation Course that we are offering at our high schools, so I recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. Payne, in second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor of this approval, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 6-0. Next, in your packet, you're going to see the board meeting dates for 2015, 16. I did send you an email asking you about the possibility of changing it to the second Monday. We went back and looked at it again. We compared the first Monday to the second Monday. Worked better with some of the committees that the commission needs some things from us at times, so it worked better for them. The only time we needed to change it was in September because of Labor Day. So, if you see those dates, you need anything to that.
I would only say that the County Commission has oversight committees, such as the Education Committee, the Budget Committee, and the Finance Committee. They normally meet a week before the regular County Commission meeting. And so, if we were to move ours forward, it would put us a month behind in getting things approved. We'd have to wait till the next month's agenda, we'd get on their agenda in time to be approved in a timely fashion. So, Ms. Hogan and I looked at that, and we finally realized why we had it on the first Monday. The only disadvantage that I can see is the data that you get, as far as your financial reports and stuff like that, is lagging data. For example, tonight, you heard the data from March instead of the data from April. But that's not a big, that's not a big issue with us, at least, and it shouldn't be with you all. As long, even if we had some, we had some issues with money and we show up or something, we would be coming to you anyway, had a special call being there or something of that nature. But this is, this works fine, I think. And I think I would recommend approval of the dates that Ms. Hogan and I have taken, put in the calendar.
Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval of these board dates, board meeting dates, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 6-0. Okay, next, we have approval of amended 2015-16 school calendar.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, when we adopted the calendar, we did not take into consideration that there is a, an election to be held on March 1st of 2016. That is a presidential primary in the state of Tennessee. I met with Kathy Hamslay and the members of the Election Commission, and they have respectfully requested that we set that day aside where no children are actually coming to school that day. So, this, Dr. Cash and the Calendar Committee has looked at that, and they have swapped out a date where we will have parent-teacher conferences on the 1st of March and not have students in schools those days, since several of our schools are used as polling places. So, I would recommend that amendment to the calendar.
And that's the only change that was made.
That's the only change for this year. Now, next fall, you'll have the general, not this fall, but the next fall, you'll have the general election, which is in November. And of course, you'll be having some of the county elections as well. Of course, that will be addressed in the 2016-17 calendar.
So, we need a motion for approval of this amended calendar?
Motion to approve the amendment to the school calendar 2015-16.
And there's a second, Mr. White. Any other discussion or questions?
I think, only discussion that I've got, and I think I brought it up the last time, why do we have those first two days in January that we're not going to school? I mean, this seems like an awful long time for those kids to be out, January 5th. And yet, we're going to have to come back on May the 24th for one day.
I don't know that I can answer anything except to say that that gives them a full two weeks out because they are going to be out 31st, which is on a Thursday of December, and then they'll be out on the Monday, the 4th, which is a continuation of the Christmas break. And then, of course, the 5th is to get the teachers back in to get them ready to do the planning for the upcoming semester, kind of get their feet on the ground. But that gives you full 10-day Christmas break on that one, well, actually, the first does that.
Gives you 12.
It's 13 days. Yeah, 13 days. And I'm sure that that was vetted with the Calendar Committee. I wasn't in on those meetings, but Dr. Cash, if you'd like to address that, you may. I think they went through that, and that was a consensus that lots of teachers felt like they needed that day.
Yes, sir. And they also, the 5th, where we have curriculum planning, that is when they are coming back together to look at the data that was last year and make like any last-minute changes to any movements of students that they need to. So, it gives them that opportunity to prepare for the next semester.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the amended school calendar for 2015-16, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 6-0. Okay, we'll move to transportation and facilities. We have an approval of change order.
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, the County Commission at their last meeting approved funding for the alternance that we requested, an amount of $1,882,500. Anyway, the way to handle that is, we already have a contract with RG Anderson to do the base work or the base contract. And we have asked, or they have asked that we handle that through a change order. There's no upcharge. It would just be adding that work to the existing contract that we have with them on the Watauga School Innovation Project. And I think that's probably the proper way to handle it. The only other way to do that would be to do a separate contract, and I don't think you want to break that thing up into separate contracts for lots of reasons, and I won't get into those. Just approve the change order.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second to approve. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, make it known by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes 6-0. We have approval of, I think it should say 2015-16.
You're correct, Madam Chairman. Did you see that?
Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act.
Yes. That is the AHERA Act that was passed in '77. And what you are approving, you are correct, it's 2015-16 school year. That company, Marge Wagner, does a survey of our facilities and maintains a record of all of the asbestos in or throughout our facilities. And they tell us if there's any issues that we need to deal with immediately, or if there's some type of corrective action that we need to take. And they've been doing this for quite some time and do a really nice job with it. If we do have a release of our episode or asbestos is released, they address that too under this contract. And Randy Bell is our contact person for that. He's done an excellent job here. So, I would recommend approval of that contract.
You put that recommendation. What is your pleasure?
You have, that our law requires.
We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, okay, I thought you had, okay. It was leaving me. Thank you for laughing at me.
Motion to do something where we're legally required to do.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approval of this asbestos contract, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 6-0. Next, we have approval of purchase of maintenance vehicle.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, anytime we purchase new vehicles, they are, your policy requires that the board approve that. And we're asking tonight that you approve the purchase of a maintenance vehicle for the maintenance department. They desperately need this vehicle for lots of reasons. Some they have are wearing out, but we need a 3/4-ton truck that they can hook their trailers to and pull, as we're going to be relocating a tremendous amount of student furniture and student supplies and teacher supplies as we make that transition to a K2 at Westside and a 3.5 at Chedon Park. So, all this stuff's got to be moved. And also, with the work that's going on down at Watauga, we're going to have to move a world of teacher supplies and products. Mr. Finch is here, and he's been asking for this vehicle ever since he came on board because he really does need it. He has one gentleman that's using his private vehicle now to make calls, and we really need to get away from that. So, we put the money in the budget amendment to do it, providing you approve it. So, I would recommend approval.
What is the vehicle going to cost? What is the bid? What's the contract?
It's a state contract price, $32,000.
$32,000. We can get it $26,000.
We can get it for $26,000, correct. But the list is $22,000.
Two-wheel and four-wheel.
Four-wheel.
Three-quarter ton, that's the one package you can everything on.
What is this truck going to be used for, other than, we have talked about?
Like service cars.
Is that all? I mean, we talked about putting blades on a truck.
Well, this truck will, we can do that. Yeah, we can.
It will, we hope so.
It's expensive, isn't it? It's expensive, isn't it?
But we could do that. But that'll be something of the future, that we'll have to purchase those items and make sure you have the hydraulics and all that to go with it.
There's a $300 package you're going to need.
Right, now, he doesn't come equipped with it, if that's your question. It does not come.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. These vehicles, but they're already built.
You just add the package, and then you can do it, yes. But it has that capability to be expanded for that use. I'd be a lot, I'd much rather have a larger vehicle, but we can't afford it.
Okay. No, this vehicle, you can use to do a lot of it. And the state is the way to go.
State is the way to go.
You can buy it with the no-holds.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Conover. Made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the purchase of the maintenance vehicle. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 6-0. Update on Crestview Elementary.
You have a Crestview update in your, on your table. I will tell you that April has not been kind to us as far as construction weather goes. We have, contractor has lost approximately two weeks of blocklaying and that kind of work due to the weather. He is attempting to make up that time by working on weekends and overtime. He's also bringing in additional crews, both mason block crews and bricklaying crews. So, I think he's, he's really making an effort to catch up. They will probably, the contractor will more than likely ask for some additional days in the contract. We were scheduled to get the building in June. We may not get the building to the 1st or the middle of July because of the lost weather, depending on what the weather is from here until we work out there. We're about 75% complete in the building, and we're going to pray for clear weather for the next, the next month. If we can get 30 days of really good weather, they can make a lot, do a lot of work. I feel very confident we'll get it in time for school opening. We may not just get it as early as we would like to have. Subject to your questions, that completes my report on questions.
Any questions? You want to go to your report?
What, my report? Report? Well, Madam Chairman, members of the board, of course, Ms. Hogan was there, and so was our state representative. He was present this afternoon when Dr. Candace McQueen, the Commissioner of Education for Tennessee, visited our district and had more specifically, she visited Springfield Middle School, had an opportunity to visit a number of classes and have conversations with students and teachers. It was really a good opportunity for her to hear what students were thinking, and she asked them questions about the assessment and about school in general. And they had an opportunity to ask her questions. The teachers also had an opportunity to engage her in conversation. She also made it a point to let everyone know that tomorrow is National Education Teacher Appreciation Day, and she told the teachers how much she appreciated all the hard work that they are doing. After her visit in the classrooms, we had a roundtable discussion with teachers from across the district who came together and talked about policy issues that have been developed at the state level. And I think they've engaged Dr. Kumar a little bit on some of those policies that he's responsible for and she has to implement and we have to implement. So it was a good give and take. We certainly appreciate her taking time to come to Robertson County. I had met her at a superintendent's conference when she was first appointed and gave her my card and invited her and lowered the hole. Three weeks later, I get a call and said, well, we'd really like to come. And she wanted to see a middle school, and we selected Springfield Middle School. She also got an opportunity to talk with some of the SMAT members and how they are helping the teachers and students, her adopted classrooms. And it was really a great, a great afternoon, I think. And Ms. Hogan, you may want to expand on that in your report. I do want to reiterate that Teacher Appreciation Day, our teachers work so hard. This past week, folks, they have, they have been under the gun because this past week has been TCAP assessment. And I know that there's a lot of frayed nerves from both students and teachers, but we appreciate all of our teachers because we came through it, according to Chris Causey, with flying colors as far as how the process went. We will know how we did or performed on that assessment later in the year. I feel very positive about it. I think everyone took a positive approach this year. And we are looking to not only meet our AMO's, but to exceed our annual management objectives. And I think it was good. We have a busy month this month with all of the ceremonies that are taking place at each of our schools, especially our high schools and our middle schools with graduation ceremonies and other closing of year activities. It's going to be an exciting time in the year. We, I don't know whether you, as board members, have been following it or not. I know TSBA has been publishing a lot of the new legislation that Dr. Kumar is so responsible for and his colleagues in the legislature. But I appreciate the fact, Dr. Kumar, that you came to the county commission meeting and enlightened them on some of the things that are taking place. But there's a large number of education bills that got through the House and Senate this year that will have an impact on education in the local district going forward. I'm scheduled to attend a meeting tomorrow afternoon. And Nikki, I had planned to attend the banquet, but it appears that I told the commissioner today that I would be at that meeting tomorrow because she's going to be there to talk about the things that are coming down the pike in the coming year with new legislation. So it's going to be an exciting school year. I will say that I don't think a lot of bad legislation was passed. I can only point to one real bad bill, but I won't do that with our distinguished guests here. Most of the legislation was very positive in that the governor put in his budget to fund the 11th month of insurance premium cost, and that's the first time this ever happened. We did only have 10 months funded. And he's also put a large amount of money for the first time in years, teachers will get a raise, a true raise. Not a bonus, but a raise. And of course, a lot of that is dependent upon the local governing body as well, and their match for that money will need to take place in the upcoming budget. But there were some good things that came out of this general assembly. And I appreciate Dr. Kumar and Senator Roberts, who was also there this afternoon, listening to me fuss at them when I catch them in the hallway over at the hospital or wherever it may be. I appreciate you all listening to us and hearing us. At least, we agree to disagree on some things, but for the most part, we agree, Dr. Kumar. And thank you very much. Subject to your questions, board members, that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, comments, both board members. Mr. Crockett.
I again want to say congratulations to those 17 students that was here earlier, 30 on ACT. I think they set the benchmark and some for all the other students to shoot for now that are coming out. And then again, Kumar, I wished that we could do something for every teacher or, you know, Kumar, but that's not possible. But I thank you, that's kind of all I can do.
I'll follow along with that, that, well, send thank you for all the teachers for the appreciation week. It's not long, we need to appreciate them all year long because of the trials and tribulations they do go through and the things they do put up with, they do a great job.
Thank you, teachers. Is this something you're going to do next year?
That's my plan.
Let's break, let's break Kendra next year. Wouldn't it be a wonderful thing, y'all? You know, that's a great thing you're doing. Thank you, and how y'all got that program going. It is a great incentive, and I would laugh if it was 35 or 40 next year. Seriously. But again, our teachers do so much, and maybe if they're giving a little bit more money for that 11th month now, maybe we can find a little something for them, too.
I think we should challenge the other elected officials to follow suit with Kendra's.
He didn't even listen to what I said, teachers. I want, I want the teachers to get a little bit.
Mr. Hurst.
Bit owed to what our colleagues have said about the teachers and what Kendra has done for the students. Dangle the carrot, they'll run for it. So it's an exciting month. Springfield is full force. Baseball softball tournament's taking place along with everyone trying out for fall sports also. East Robinson is named the new football coach. Hopefully, we will be in the paper positive about football season. On the, on that same note, our outgoing coach has had some tragedy in the last 10 days, two weeks. He was robbed at gunpoint at his apartment two weeks ago, I think, 10 days. And his father dropped dead with a heart attack Friday morning. So that's J. Pierce. So. Yes. And he was there, he was there with him when it happened. Collapsed in the shower and tried to do CPR. We're losing a good fellow. New blood's coming in. I also would like to invite anyone out next Tuesday. There's about 35 young men in Wyman that will be participating in Montgomery County, Robinson County, Boyage Better Beef Show, representing all areas of Robinson County. Most of the time, either the champion or the reserve grand champion comes from Robinson County. So if you don't have anything to do Tuesday, come out and support the kids. It's about, about 35 of them. Lot of, lot of teachers' children are participating. If anyone would like a sponsor, okay, if they can save the end. That's all I have.
Mr. Converse.
I guess I'm last, and if I don't say, I'm going to sound redundant, but if I don't say it, somebody will take it wrong. But I, I want to echo what Jeff said. Now do I appreciate the teachers, and I certainly wish we could, we could pay you what you are worth. But I would like to see us find some money, and I've said this for a year or two now, find some money in our local budget to make sure that the raise is, you know, something more than just a token. I mean, I'm sure the state can match our local funds with that and see what we can do for them. That has them make a lot of concessions the last couple of years. And, you know, if we get a little breathing room this year, I'd like to, you know, reward that, those concessions. Thanks to the chamber for putting together the survey and enlightening us with that information. And appreciate all the work y'all do over there.
And I'll just say, I think it was a great afternoon in Springfield Middle with Dr. McQueen. It was very enlightening. I thought it was interesting. She asked, she said, we're going to ask you three things with the roundtable. She said, first, I want you to tell me some successes that you have, have found, you know, some things that are successful in your classroom lately. I want to know some challenges that you face. And the last thing she asked was, do you feel valued? And I was very, I'm very happy to say that. Someone in that room said they felt like the school board and the staff here do value our teachers, and we do very much, and we appreciate everything they do. You notice Crystal's not here tonight, our student rep. I was going to present her with a, an initial pad here, holder, but I will take that to her tomorrow and thank her for everything that she's done. She is at the Springfield High School Awards tonight. We wish her well. And that's it, I think. So I will entertain the motion.
Oh, wait on, girl. I just, thank you. I just want to thank you. And really, I would like to reiterate that, just as all of you and probably at equally good level, the state government and the legislature are really committed to improving education in our state. And we've seen great strides over the last year or two. And the governor, as well as the legislature, did put significant amount of resources this budget year to justify our confidence that we need to continue on a path to improving the education of the state. The bills that came through, I think the budget was the most major thing, including things that you have covered about salary increases, the adding the 11th month of insurance, and various infrastructure improvements that are added in the budget. The curriculum revising the standards bill passed 97-0, which was a very contentious thing, and it was really remarkable to see people come together from all sides and pass that. And the standards will be kept at a high level, and they will this time be to other, by Tennessee teachers. I've had a request to nominate one of our local teachers to the advisory committees, and I would invite other teachers who want to do that. All I can do is recommend you attach your resume and of course, write a letter of recommendation to the governor. But it'll be very nice to have some of our own people involved in the process so that we can play a role in developing standards that we own, that we follow, and we develop, and they will be kept at a high level. I think that was really the highlight of the thing. Yes, we're going to have some philosophical differences, and Mike and I hashed one out this afternoon. But that's part of it. I think the important thing is our heart is in the right place. We want to improve education, and all of us can work together even if we differ. But our lines of communication are open, and I think it will serve our students well. And really, all the improvement that's, that has happened, we are very, very aware that that has happened because of the work of the teachers and we honor them. Thank you.
And on that note, I just want to add one thing. An article that you wrote that was published, I think I've shared this with you already, but if you didn't see it, it was, he said, there are three things that you need to think about when you consider, when you are looking at what goes on in a classroom. Number one is ask a teacher. Number two is ask a teacher. And number three is ask a teacher. So I really appreciated that.
I want an election on that. I mean that from a mindset. But we have to keep it like, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, if that's it, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor, make it known by saying aye. Meeting is adjourned.